Welcome to the joint meeting of the Rules and Open Government Committee and Committee of the Whole. Tony, can we have a rule call, please?
Give me a second.
No worries.
Arina?
Yeah.
Jones?
President.
You have a quorum.
Okay, so no council meeting next week, but we have a meeting for Tuesday, February 23rd. And let's start with pages five and six. And I know there's a a request from staff to have an 11:00 a.m. regular session start time. So I want to ask the maker of the motion to completely disregard staff's recommendation. Let's see. Five and six, seven and eight. Nine and 10. 11 and 12. 13 and 14. 15 and 16. 17 and 18. 19 and 20. 21 and 22. And that's it. So we'll go to the public comments. And the first speaker is Paul. Go ahead, Paul.
Good afternoon, counsel. I'm here for Councilman Paralisis. The Laura's Law, the one on housing.
Yes.
Yeah, so on the abatements. And so what you'll come up with that? That isn't right now?
It's not right now, but we will come to that and make sure that you.
Okay, cool. I just, I still, is there a class that I can take? I have no clue on how you guys do what you do. And so it gets frustrating because I keep coming to the meetings and I'm not getting any help or direction from anybody. I'm doing this all on my own. And what I don't like doing is saying something, I'm staying some out of order, or this item didn't come up. And there's a sense of rejection there. And, and so is there, can you point me or suggest something to me to where I can get some help knowing a consent item or this item? Because I don't know how you guys function. I just pay attention to the issues.
Well, I'll do you one better, Paul. Actually, I just had this conversation earlier with my staff in terms of how the rules agenda is formatted. It is actually, can be pretty confusing for everyone. So you're not alone on.
Okay, cool.
So I want to ask City Clerk Tony if we can look at how we can revamp the rules agenda, make it easier for both council members, staff, and the general public to follow. If we can make that request.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would also like to say that I've posted a video on YouTube to explain how to read the regular council agenda. And I can do the same thing for all the other agendas. I'm going to start doing a series of how-to videos. Now that Zoom has made it really easy to share a screen and narrate, so I can direct people through. So I'll do rules next.
Fantastic. Thank you, Tony. Next speaker is Blair.
Hi, I'm Blair Beekman here. Happy Wednesday. That was really nice to hear. Yeah, I'll be looking forward to that, too, for a way that everyday people can understand the process better. That's really interesting. And YouTube is a really interesting way to do that. So yeah, to make things better, better explain things, that will just be incredible for our future. Consider language interpretation, how that can be an easier process in the future. And I guess what Chappie Jones has mentioned, you want to be doing something different with the consent calendar in the future and how that is presented. So good luck in your efforts and thanks. There are two items on the council agenda this week that really caught my interest. One was the COVID issues. I just wanted to offer that, you know, I feel that we have to just be wary of the new strain of COVID going around. You know, even as, you know, rates may be starting to go down. There's a little guy in there that's just a little, it's going to be, cause a little bit more pain, I think possibly. It could possibly cause a few more deaths than need to. So we have to be ready for that. And, you know, we just, we can't give up yet, I don't think. And so good luck on that. The other thing is about cybersecurity. And thank you for having such an issue. I really hope you guys just spend a lot of time talking about it. And as you're talking about it, for all your worries and all, everything you're going to be talking about it, I hope you save a certain amount of time that there are ways to talk about cybersecurity in terms of open public policy. And it's being worked on around the world at this time, you know, how it can be a process between community and government. And it doesn't have to be a sense of war. It is a sense of peace. This part of the process of peace. And I hope you guys learn to talk about open public policies with cybersecurity as well.
Thank you, Blair. Coming back to counsel, let's see, Councilman Paralis has his hands raised. And just for the new members of this committee, my efforts to not have the council meeting times moved up has never been successful. So I don't anticipate that that's going to change today, but I just want to let you know that this has been an ongoing process. So Councilmember Paralis.
I'll at least ask a question for you. Where is it that the staff thinks we're going to be spending a lot of time on that date? Is it because of the 3.1? Or is there additional items to like 4.1, police reform, stuff like that?
Yeah, Lee Wilcox, Chief of Staff of the City Manager's Office, there's several items. Some of the land use items later on the night, we'll have a lot of public comment and some controversy, as well as the inclusionary housing ordinance. The 4.1, you're absolutely correct. And then it's not a 3.1, but per council direction, we did include a 3.8, which is a verbal report on the county's vaccination program that the council wished for. And we do think all of those together will take considerable time.
Okay. I would have to concur. So sorry, sorry, Chair.
But I'll.
I will make the motion momentarily. And I know it's not necessarily part of this item, but I just want to say thank you to Tony for making mention of the how-to videos. Quite frankly, a lot of these meetings are confusing. And certainly rules is one of, one of the, I think, more confusing ones. And hopefully in the how-to, you can also explain sort of the, just the function of rules, maybe, right? In the beginning, kind of what it, what its role plays as a, as a committee, and then a how-to for our committee members to participate. But I do appreciate you doing that and making that response. And to Paul Soto, you're not, you're not alone. And so with that, I will move to approve the agenda for the 23rd with the change, sorry, it's February 23rd, with the change that will start at 11:00 a.m.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Tony?
Arina? Yes, but before, I'm sorry, I forgot to raise my hand, Chair.
No worries.
May I make a comment before we vote?
Go ahead.
So are we, does your motion, Councilwoman Paralis, include any time certens for the items that were highlighted?
No, it did not. If you wanted to suggest something, though, go for it.
Yeah, I mean, I think that there's quite a few items on the agenda that will elicit some participation from folks. I think it's, is it 4.1? The police reforms, independent investigation of police misconduct work plan. I think, once again, if we can do not before 5. I know with the 3.1 and 3, well, with the 3.1, usually we go pretty long. But I'm hoping we can do 4.1 not before 5. Would you accept that?
Is that okay with the maker of the motion?
Sorry, I was trying to get back to my mute screen. Yeah, that's fine. So just for that one item then, not before 5, is that correct?
Right. And I don't know if Lee has an idea about the land use. If it's the citywide design standards and guidelines, I'm sure that that will create a lot of feedback as well. And so I wonder if we could have also a time certain for that. Maybe this one's more like not before, not after 8, or not after 9, or something like that. I know that there's a lot of folks who participate in many of our committees that may want to participate, but don't want to stay on the meeting until 11, when we think we're going to anticipate to have this item come up. So that's another consideration that I'm hoping you would include in your motion. Unless, you know, unless our colleagues think otherwise, or Lee, you think you can anticipate a better time?
No, I guess my, my only suggestion is, and you guys can always discuss this during orders of the day, orders of the day as well, but to give yourself plenty of flexibility, depending on what comes up on the 23rd. And so I think obviously moving 4.1 to not before 5 o'clock kind of sets some boundaries around that. And there's enough, obviously with 3.8, around the county vaccinations and other items. But not knowing how long that conversation around 4.1 will happen with the land use items, I wouldn't want you guys to box yourself in. So it's a policy call. But we usually do advocate for you guys giving yourselves plenty of flexibility on the day of.
Yeah, you know, I was on the general plan task force. And this is one of the items that kept coming back in terms of people wanting to provide input and just keeping track of it. And I know my community keeps track of this quite closely. So I know that my residents will come out. It would be nice to provide them with some time parameters, at the very least. I get, I get that we don't want to kind of box ourselves in. I know that the mayor, as the chair of the meeting, can have some flexibility in terms of bringing things, just moving things around. So I don't know if.
As a group, by the way, you certainly don't have council next week, council member, but you do have rules. So you do have the ability one more time to to look at this agenda and refine it if additional things get added. So if it's something that the committee wants to do now, or not do now, you have the ability to pivot next week.
Okay, I still think, you know, whether it's next week or now, I do think that there's going to be quite a bit of comment created by this particular item. So, you know, I'll leave it to the maker of the motion if, you know, if you want to do it now, if you want to do it until the week after, when we actually resume rules once again. I'm fine with that as well.
Yeah, and I know we talked about this length a little bit last week, right, just in regards to the timing. And so just to be clear, I mean, we could do a not before a certain time, but if we pick something like time certain, I believe the way that the rules are, Nora, right, it's like if we said time certain at 8, then the goal would be to try to get it at 8, or if we're still on one item, correct, then we complete that item and it's as close to 8 as possible, correct?
That's the language, yes.
So would you want that a time certain, Councilwoman Arina, or would you want not before, you know, a certain time? And obviously, we talked about, if we do the not before 5, it still could happen at, you know, 11:30, so.
I think it's just a matter of guaranteeing that the item is not going to be heard extremely late. We heard that from our mobile health, mobile home residents about the item being at the end of the agenda. And, you know, they started at the very beginning. So I think it's just important to give a timeframe. I know that I wanted like the cable guy timeframe, that's not part of our rules. We can't do that. But I, so a time certain would work as well. So if we said, you know, at 8:30 or 9 o'clock. But, you know, as we, if there's any drop-offs from the items, we certainly can correct this next week.
So my, my only concern is that, looking at the agenda, I know that for at least my district, the Martha's Garden specific plan is 10.4. All likely have community members that want to participate, but I know for certain 10.5 is probably going to have community members that want to participate. And that's in Councilman Foley's district. I happen to be in the Brown Act with her on that. And so I think it's just, you know, if we were to do something like, hey, let's. And so I think it's just, you know, if we were to do something like, hey, let's make 10.2 a time certain. We know something is going to be last, right? Something is going to be, be heard pretty late. And so it's just at the expense of what? And so that's my concern is that I think, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm not certain that we're, we're going to be really helping, you know, here, we may just be moving one person in front of the line and then, and then somebody else, you know, goes extremely later. Now regardless, 10.5 is the last item on the agenda. So the likelihood there, right, is that it's, it's, it's last unless council member, you know, Foley wanted to, to, to join us at rules next week and say, hey, can we, we get a time certain on that? We're not necessarily hearing from her today, but she may hear that, you know, we've, we've had this conversation. So, you know, I, I haven't heard from anybody yet on the citywide design standards and guidelines that, that there's going to be a big turnout. So I'd prefer if we could maybe, you know, let's put our, keep our ears open until next Wednesday at rules and then decide if, if there's really, you know, a, a need to, to make a time certain on, on one of, one or maybe a couple of these as we go through. That, that's just my concern. I think that we may, somebody's going to be last, right? And so we're, we're, we're going to make a decision here that may have implications.
Yes, I, I have been hearing from my neighborhood associations that this is something that's and, and this has been, I've been getting correspondence since the end of last year, like in December, throughout all of the year last year, but definitely picked up at the end of December. So I know this is going to be rather, rather a large item. I think 10.5 has already come before us. And I think it's in a different stage of development. This is the one with Cambrian School District, correct?
Uh, yes, yeah.
Yeah, so, so I think this is, this has come before us. I, I don't remember that taking too, too long. Either, either way, you know, whether, you know, council member Foley wants to, you know, request a time certain is completely up to her. If you want to just keep it open, I, I'll still say the same thing I, I'm saying today, I'll say it next week. I, I think it needs a time certain because I think there's going to be a lot of folks who are going to come out because of it.
Okay, and that would be 8 p.m. that you were looking at then?
I, yeah, I, you know, we could say eight or we could say nine if we really think that, you know, it's going to go long. I, I'm open, I, I just don't want it to be 11 o'clock that, that then we're going to talk about standards, design standards.
Yeah, it sounds like you have a clear indication that, that you're going to have a lot of people come out. I'm fine with it then, we can also make a change next week. But I think, I think this might send a clear message to anybody else, whether it's, you know, I can reach out to my community members on 10.4 and then Pam can get an understanding or Councilmember Foley can get an understanding, right? And if she wants to chime in before next Wednesday, then we can add anything else in. So that's fine, we'll, we'll, we'll send a clear message then. We can do the agenda approved for the 23rd with a time starting at 11. And then item 4.1, not to be heard before five. And 10.2, time certain at 8 p.m. I believe I got that right.
Is that acceptable to the, uh, seconder?
Was I the seconder?
I think so.
It's fine with me, I couldn't remember.
So that's time certain and not a not to be heard before 8 p.m.?
Correct, the first one was not to be heard before five. That was item 4.1. And then the 10.2 was time certain at eight.
That's correct.
Okay.
All right, Tony, roll call please.
Okay, Arenas?
Yes.
Cohen?
Hi.
Davis?
Hi.
Peralis?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, on to item D, meeting schedules. We have the Google Downtown West Mixed Use Development District Utilities Study Session. Let's see, we have two speakers from the public, go ahead, Paul.
Yes, Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. The last year, there was a discussion regarding Google trying to get a direct conduit into PG&E's line. And that was like, like turned down because what, what's going to happen at Google, this is, this is fact, is that they're going to have quantum computing going on there. It's going to be the actual center of quantum computing. In order to sustain that infrastructure, you need, I mean, just exponential amounts of electricity in order to support it without drawing away from the grids within the, within the general area. Okay, and that was knocked down. That was knocked down because basically what Google wants to do is use the infrastructure of the city that we have over generations built with our tax money. And then insert themselves and try to get a, a direct line to that and become its own self-contained apparatus. You know, and, and, and see, the, these are the things about, this isn't just about Google coming over here, okay, building restaurants, uh, uh, you know, nice, pretty walkways. It's bigger than that, a lot bigger than that. And this is a prime example of it, you know? And so what I'm hoping is in terms of what the principle of protecting the people and protecting the infrastructure that we have and, and, and how delicate it actually is, and considering that they're getting, they're gaining their tenancy in the most redlined area of the city, to be very careful about these situations because they do not care. Google West does not care anything about the city. They pay off lawyers to deal with the city. They don't do, they're not dealing with anything about what's going on. So I'm asking for various, for, for caution and to protect our infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Blair?
Hi, thank you. A reminder that we've named a street in the area after the 44th president Barack Obama. You know, I think we've all realized, you know, what, you know, the, the idealism with that and, and what that asks of ourselves. And I hope we're, you know, it can remind us of ourselves of, you know, the good efforts to always be considering the east side with issues of the Google Village. And, and basically how, when we're thinking of the east side, you know, it, it is a multicultural question we're asking. I mean, how can there be a future for, you know, the, the Vietnamese community, for the Eritian community, for the Ethiopian community, the Filipino community, you know, or the Chinese community? There's a lot of groups, a lot of groups in San Jose, a lot of different ethnic groups. And how can we create, you know, we have good examples for the east side at this time. I feel we're growing those good examples of how to, you know, include east side's things. How do we grow that to include a full multicultural idealism? And I hope that can be some of our next steps. With that all said, I mean, that is the purpose of Google coming to San Jose, that has to be. And with that all said, I want to just simply question, you know, should Google even be in San Jose at all? I mean, they're building our national security future and I'm not too happy about it. And that always should be a question. And if we don't ask that question, then that defeats our purpose of, of living in this society and what we can truly set out to accomplish. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, bringing it back to the committee. Any comments, motions?
Move approval.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, Tony?
Arenas?
Yes.
Cohen? Davis?
Hi.
Peralis?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
All right, on to the public record. Let me see if there's any public speakers, Blair Beekman.
Hi, thank you. I have, I wanted to kind of summarize my, my public record letter this week. It was about ideas about about the future of the commission meetings. And I wanted to, I thanked yourselves in my public letter for making the charter review and a few other commission meetings, hopefully the start, the, the redistricting meetings and all that. You know, I hope, thank you that you'll be making those, placing those on YouTube for everyone to see. That's an incredible service to do with commission meetings. And I just simply asked, what other steps can we take? I know it's on everyone's mind, what other steps can we take to make the commission process more accessible in the future? I think it can be a great way to develop community relationships with each other. And, you know, the ideas of a better language interpretation, how to clear that up and clean that up. You know, I hope we can work that out and good luck in our efforts to do that. I also mentioned about, you know, my continued respect for Deputy Chief Anthony Mata as a really good example in how to look for the future of a police chief with ideas of reimagine and equity. I think he embodies those things incredibly. And I think he would do amazing, good job in cooling off the tensions, the SJPOA can simply offer this world. I think he could have a really good way to, to ease that bad gossip that, that the SJPOA gets in sometimes and just makes a muck of things, I feel. And I think he can temper that very well. And I think that's important for all of us. He can temper it well and, and for, for all of us. So I'm looking forward how he, how he can do that and, and, and what that can be. To conclude, I, I had a few thoughts about equity and imagine.
Thank you, Blair, thank you. Lorraine? Go ahead, Lorraine. You're on mute. We lost her. If she logs back in, I'll try to catch your comments. So I want to bring it back to the committee, Councilmember Peralis.
Yeah, one question for staff on the public record here. I noticed what's titled, "The Letter From Senator Cortezy", but looks like just his standard newsletter that I get as well. Is, is that in the public record because that got emailed into the clerk's office? Or is there another reason?
Generally, if it got emailed directly to us and they asked us to send it to council, that's what we do. We put it on the public record. We have a public record policy of, of how things get onto the public record.
Okay, I just, I wasn't certain if that's just, you know, the clerk's office is on the email list like I am and get the email and then, you know, it, and all of a sudden it, it comes into the public record. So I just, I curious, because it, it could be overkill unless indeed maybe the senator's office was looking specifically for that to, to make it in front of the council through the public record. Anyway, that was just a curiosity of a question there. And, and I did read Blair's thank you letter. I'll say thank you back to you, Blair. You're always very appreciative and, and kind in your, your, your commentary. So appreciate the letter. And I'll move to approve the public record.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, Tony?
Arenas?
Yes.
Cohen?
Hi.
Davis?
Hi.
Peralis?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi. Okay, on to item F1A, Deferred Compensation Advisory Committee Appointments. Looking to see if there are any public comments.
Move approval.
It's been moved, can I get a second? Okay, no public comments, so Tony?
Arenas?
Yes.
Cohen?
Hi.
Davis?
Hi.
Peralis?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi. On to item G1, the consent calendar. Don't see any public comments.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, Tony?
Arenas?
Yes.
Cohen?
Hi.
Davis?
Hi.
Peralis?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Okay, next is the monthly report of activities for January 2021 from the city auditor.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers, Joe Roy, city auditor. I'm here with my monthly report of activities for January. In January, we presented our annual service report to council. We've got a number of projects in process, which is described in the attachment to the memo. Happy to answer any questions I ask the approve the report.
Thank you, Joe. I'm looking to see if there are any public speakers. I don't see any, so. Blair?
Move.
Okay.
Hi.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion to second it, and Blair, go ahead.
Great, thank you, hi. Yeah, you know, thank you for this monthly report. I think first off, just I'm learning how to speak that for, for other people, the community. This item simply offers a, a real long list of, of things the city is working on at this time. And it just gives a bunch of examples if you want to talk about issues. COVID-19 expenditures, clean energy issues, the city's investment program, housing department grant programs, which thank yourselves, you know, good luck in your efforts in, in funding your own housing rent forgiveness ideas at this time. So, yeah, I mean, I could talk about clean energy and the importance of, you know, a, a, a community democratic future that clean energy offers. And, you know, with, with your clean energy item here. Overall, thanks for the, for this item and thanks for your work. And just, just so you know, thank you that this thing is accessible to the public and we can comment on it. Thank you.
Thank you. It's all public speakers, so we have a motion to second, Tony?
Arenas? Yeah, thank you, Cohen?
Hi.
Davis?
Hi.
Peralis?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi. Next item is Laura's Law Update. Councilmember Peralis, would you like to speak to this first or go to public comments?
If we have people from the public here, I'd like to go there.
Okay, Paul?
Yes, Paul Soto. Look, we can really do some work here, Councilman Peralis. I'm, I'm working right now with Dr. Michael Libara at the Mirio Wright Center that is up on, up on Burnell Road. Okay, I'm also working with Gardner Community Health Center. Okay, and so we know best how to really address this without the lock them up, come in. Because you can euphemistically say from the outside, well, no, this is just helping them. We're, you know, what kind of human beings are we to watch our fellow citizens suffer? That's the line that came this with, came with. But the fact is, you still have to get this person into custody. You still have to lock them in a room. And there's a process of doing that. And 47% of the interactions in the attempts to get that person in there have proved fatal in our city for that particular person. So what I'd really like to do is we can do some good work in this area. I'm already working with Supervisor Allen Berg and Chavez in this particular area. So I think that if we form the collaboration between the city and the county, Gardner and Dr. Libara, who is a PhD, I mean, we can do some really good work in the areas of rehabilitation of, 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 and after the rehabilitation piece, giving the person a sense of their own value and duty and responsibility to the city that helped them out. Because that's really what has informed everything that I do. Look at how many hours I spend with you guys. The reason why I do it is in, in expression of gratitude for what my city and county has done for me. I owe you people. And this is the way that I show my civic appreciation and participation. So I'd really like to work with your office on this one, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. And Scott?
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor Jones, members of the committee, Scott Neese, Executive Director, San Jose Downtown Association. This is a tool in the toolbox that is long overdue for our county. Really appreciate Councilman Peralas bringing it forward. There's no greater need right now. We're we're not really talking about the folks that Paul was just talking about. We're talking about the individuals that suffer from severe mental illness and are incapable of making decisions for themselves and put themselves or others in danger. And it doesn't work. I mean, there's the poster child for this, unfortunately, is the tortoise stabber. You know, the police pick him up, put him in a fifty one fifty. He doesn't even stay for a seventy two hour hold. He's back two days later with a brick looking for the tortoise. This this unfortunate individual needs a quality of help that he isn't capable of asking for. And this is not a panacea. The the assisted outpatient treatment, we understand there's only a small number of folks that are going to qualify for it. But this small number of people are causing the majority of the fear in our community. And this is long overdue for the county to accept this. I fully support the council putting the pressure on the supervisors to try to talk their behavioral health staff into using this long overdue tool. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Blair.
Hi, uh, thank you for the words of the both previous speakers. This was an item that was brought up by former councilperson Camus in the past few years. And it was brought to the Board of Supervisors at that time as well. And they come from a tradition to kind of, uh, they don't want to quite use Laura's Law. But they will respect it and can respect its guidelines and its process, how it can work to, you know, work their own programs. And I I don't know if that's what you'll continue to do or if this is the signal of something different. But I really liked the words of Paul Soto that, you know, he's looking for choices about how things can develop with this. And it'll be interesting to see how he can help in 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 the work for this issue. Good luck in in how you will talk about it and work on it and and you'll be working on it with the county. And I guess good luck to all of us, how we how how we'll address this issue in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Bring it back to the committee, Councilmember Peralas. There's also an early consideration response to your item.
Yes, I I saw that. And I I know obviously this is kind of beating the drum. This is something that we've been working on for several years. And as Blair actually just pointed out, something that both myself, actually, and Councilman Camus had moved two years ago. And we had a conversation with the county on it, uh, the county and Behavioral Health Services, County Board and Behavioral Health Service did did not act on implementing this tool. Uh, I will state, certainly, there are, uh, there are a difference of, I think, intention behind why I initially was looking at this tool. And and Councilman Camus, we we still agreed on the use of the tool. But I don't necessarily want that to be confused. And I also have never been homeless. And so I do respect Paul's opinion at times. Paul and I have had to agree to disagree on certain items. But I will say that in this regard, uh, in the experience I've had over the last six years, there is a very small percentage of our unhoused community, specifically small percentage of them that are mentally ill, but to such an extreme level and for such a long duration that have just been through our system in and out, whether it's traditional outpatient treatment that the county offers, it's unassisted, EPS on seventy two hour holds, which traditionally are are under twenty four hours, in and out of jail, even the best solutions that we have to date in regards to permanent housing, like our permanent supportive housing development that we have in District Three here. And we still see a small percentage of individuals that can't even succeed there. And and really, the quite frankly, it's it's a a need for even more direct treatment. And with that, the the reality is, is that on 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 voluntary bases, it it does not work for everybody. And what that means is we have an outcome where we just continue to release people right back into the street. Whenever a service doesn't work for them, an outpatient treatment or going to EPS, literally, they're just released right right back out into our street. And it certainly was highlighted in regards to the recent incident at the planned Learn Preschool in the East Side where that exact thing happened. And we had the traumatic incident here at Grace Baptist. And again, an individual suffering from mental illness. Uh, and really, that's been at the core of some of these these really impactful and 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 heinous crimes that we've seen of late in the community. And I don't at all want to, you know, throw a blanket and try to associate all of our our unhoused community. I I think I want to make it very clear. And as I've said numerous times, we're talking about a small percentage, but it is a small percentage that can have an overwhelming impact on our community. And Laura's Law, or Assisted Outpatient Treatment, as it's called, allows us to compel treatment for the mentally ill. And that that is a fancy word. And so as Paul states, it's correct, right? It's 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 it is taking somebody into custody for treatment. We don't have that tool today. So I know the, you know, we we have, we have today EPS and that's it. Um, and so absolutely, we have interactions that with our police that that end fatally with individuals in in experiencing mental illness. And that's what I want to avoid as well. But I want to avoid it by giving people the treatment that they need. And enacting Laura's Law does not mean that we need officers to necessarily go out there and make arrests to get people into treatment. In fact, as my memo states, seventy five percent of individuals referred to assisted outpatient treatment actually opted in voluntarily to begin with. And they may not have wanted to stay, right? As as other treatment systems and traditional outpatient treatment would allow them to come and go, assisted outpatient treatment is is intended to be there to help somebody through that would traditionally, you know, quit or walk out of a program that was voluntary. And and we've seen this be successful, as I stated in my memo. Nineteen counties have adopted it. The reports have shown reduction in violence by sixty four percent, homelessness by thirty percent, hos- hospitalization by thirty three percent, and contact with law enforcement by forty six percent. So you want to reduce the the opportunity for somebody experiencing severe mental illness to interact with the law with law enforcement and potentially end in in a death. Reducing it by forty six percent is 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 a a great way to start, especially with that that specific population. The cost, as we know, with addressing and and continuing to to just release people back out into the streets without a real solution. San Francisco alone was seeing four hundred and eighty five thousand dollars in monthly services to these particular one hundred and twenty nine individuals that they they had in the program prior to them being in the program. Of course, that cost was reduced to eighty one thousand, seven hundred and forty five dollars per month once they were in the program. So there's all sorts of implications that this has. And here locally, we have forty two percent of individuals in San Jose that are homeless that have reported having a psychiatric psychiatric emotional condition. That's again, to be expected, and that's not the number that we're talking about, that we would be, we would be focusing on or that Laura's Law even intends to focus on. The idea is it's really, really a narrow, small number, small percentage of individuals that that are suffering from the the most severe and extreme cases of mental illness and additionally have shown repeated lack of success in the the systems and the and the opportunities we have today. And an additional showing or additionally showing violence in in repeated acts of violence within the community. Implementing Laura's Law in my mind will serve as a bridge to recovery in a way to stop that revolving door of just repeatedly either hospitalization or homelessness or in and out of jail that we have seen for so many people. Ultimately, does not does not end well, does not end in them having, living out successful, fulfilling lives. But instead, we see a lot of these individuals being the ones that die on our streets. And in my mind, adopting Laura's Law, incorporating assisted outpatient treatment will help people get on their own two feet, provide them the support that they need for their mental health. And and obviously, this is not something that the city can can enact. So we have to continue to advocate that the county includes this program in their toolbox. We do have new Board of Supervisors right on the county. So with that new makeup, as well as new leadership within the the Behavioral Health Services at the county, I felt it was important that we bring this back up. And and I I know that the city administration has issued their position and the fact that this is greenlit because of the work has already been prioritized. And I do appreciate that. I'll move approval. Thanks.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, Councilmember Arinas.
Thank you. You know, I I appreciate that you you're bringing up the mental health of of our unhoused community, Councilmember Peralas. I know that there's a lot of controversy around this assisted outpatient treatment. And especially by the mental health, the the Behavioral Health Department in in our county as well as their association that advocates against it. Now, I I I do think that this might may serve as another tool in the toolbox, right? You know, it's not the end all. And I don't, I don't, I know that you you're not, that's not what you're saying either. I just don't want us to hang our hats on that. I think this, for me, really prompts like the 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 need for the conversation about our unhoused community and and what what we can do under our, under, within our own realm, right? And I think their police department is taking a step in the right direction with their Behavioral Health Unit with eight officers that are going to be permanent from here on. I I I think that's a a really good strategy. It's like I said, it's just another tool in toolbox. It's not going to answer the whole issue. But I I do think that this, for me, it would be helpful for us to maybe reconnect once again with the county about this. Because I know that there's a lot of issues that are happening even before the pandemic. And this was still during the recession and after the recession. You know, there are a lot of families who just never really recovered from the recession. Our Mental Health Service Providers being one of them. A lot of folks who were, you know, outreach specialist or family development specialist or, you know, all those folks were in that supportive network, including a lot of our mental health providers that would meet with and counsel our children, couldn't afford to live in this county, right? And so I think there's also a scarcity of mental health providers in our county that we need to address, along with maybe pivoting just a little bit with with what we're doing for a homeless prevention and and the rest of the, you know, the housing plan that we have, the unhoused plan, annual plan that we have. It I for me, it's like this is a a really large conversation. And I I welcome that this topic can create an opening for that conversation. And I know that there's some incidents that you've mentioned that really just broke our hearts, right? Having two people die and three people wounded at a at a shelter is just unacceptable. And it, and I'm glad that you're raising this issue up again. I don't necessarily think that this assisted outpatient treatment is the answer because it is outpatient. It's not, you know, it it's not going to house somebody in a in a facility somewhere that is going to reduce the risk to our community, the community and the interactions with our community or with our police officers or service providers. And so I think there's some additional conversations we need to have about that. I do believe that this may be part of the toolbox that we need. The one question that I would want to ask, and I don't know if maybe this is part of the legislative team or just, maybe you know this answer. I know that you were quoting the San Francisco efficacy. And I don't know for what the timeframe was. I think it was just a month, right? And I don't know if that was recent or if that was early on. I just wonder how are those other counties that have adopted this this policy? What are they doing that are that is different in this county? So, you know, bottom line, that they their their toolbox might be enhanced with other tools other than just this outpatient assisted outpatient treatment. And if you found any, I think that's important also to to point out because this might not be the solution. It might have been like three different strategies that they they took on at the same time. I think you you're you you you're going to respond to something.
Yeah. I could do it now or I could I could wait. I'm I'm comfortable.
No, 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 that's that's really what it comes down to was that was those were my comments.
Okay, yeah, I can wait after that. Or Councilman David speaks.
Okay. Councilmember Davis.
Thanks, I'm happy to support this. I just have one question. Lee, uh, I was, I thought I read something in the paper about Laura's Law being an opt out rather than an opt in. And I did, I just looked it up with the California Association of Local Behavioral Health Boards and Commissions. They just have on their webpage a twenty twenty update. New California legislation, AB nineteen seventy six, requires counties to participate in Laura's Law unless they opt out. Did that become law, that AB nineteen seventy six? And therefore, we would be, this, the county would be required to participate? Or is that, are they looking at opting out? What, do you know what the story is there?
Yeah, I would, actually, I think Andrea's out. And Alex Felton from our IGR, she can probably answer that better than I can. And then I can add on after after she answers that.
Thanks, I didn't see you there, Alexandria. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Davis. So, yeah, actually, AB nineteen seventy six from Edmond, that passed last year. And so there is a provision in there where counties can decide or choose to opt out. So I was, this is actually a good time to reaffirm the county's position on this because it's coming up, it's actually coming up for consideration again at the county. So I believe the on BHSD is considering this and bringing it to the Health and Hospitals Committee next week because there is now that we've now come to the point where the county can make a decision as to whether or not they want to opt in or or continue as as operations as nor as they currently are. So that's one thing that we are, we're currently monitoring.
So it's at the Health and Hospitals Committee next week?
Yeah, so they're gonna, they're gonna start, the staff is looking at and exploring it right now, the decision whether or not they want to opt in.
And. Don't you mean, don't they have to opt out at this?
They have to, sorry, they have to, it's it's the app. So the decision is to whether or not they want to opt out. And so it's being explored by staff. The first step is the committee. And then the, I I believe the plan is from there, it would go to the Board of Supervisors, probably a little bit later in the spring, so somewhere around April for a final decision.
Okay. And then, so reaffirming this today, which I'm happy to do, and I saw it had a green light because we've already talked about it, does that mean that you will be communicating with the county about our, the city's position on Laura's Law and the fact that we don't want them to opt out? We do want them to implement it?
Exactly.
Okay, great.
Absolutely. I mean, I I think it'll take two different approaches. And, you know, the the reason I I agree with Alex is it's actually very good timing because of the bill. So I think there'll be direct advocacy from, you know, IGR staff to IGR staff and to to the board and the committee on your behalf, since we have the direction to do to ensure they don't opt out. And I think to Councilmember Arinas's point, which are very important, this is one tool. And we went through a very long, extensive process with the county and Destination Home around the community plan and homelessness. And so, you know, this, this is one of those tools within the community plan around, you know, needing crisis response and mental health, clinical services and and substance treatment and and a variety of other things that we then through implementation process and through our partnership with the community plan, we would go ahead and and look to see how the county would implement it. But again, this first stage for us really is a a policy decision that we want to influence with the county.
Thank you.
Before I go to Councilmember Peralas to answer, address that Councilmember raises questions, I have a quick question. Councilmember Davis brings up an interesting point. So if I understand it correctly, since the county hasn't opted out yet, that they have a Laura Laura's Law, um, effectively, they're under Laura's Law right now? Would that be a correct understanding? If they haven't opt out?
I believe with the legislation of Alex's correct, that would probably be correct, that they they do have it. But I can say they have no policy direction. But I can say they have no policy direction or implementation around that at all right now.
Okay, um, yeah, the reason why I was asking that question is I have an individual in my district who we've been trying to um house and provide services to for years. Um, and she's in a, in a very difficult situation. She's sleeping outdoors, she's washing her clothes in puddles at the gas station. I mean, it's, it's inhumane to, to not have her receive services, but we've tried and we haven't been successful. So uh, anything we could do to push the county along to, to support that would be, uh, would be good. Uh, Councilmember Prowl?
Yeah, thank you. And uh, and no doubt, as, as Councilmember Adena says, this, this is a uh, you know, this is a contentious issue. Um, and I, I, you know, I've, I've, I've kind of butted heads with behavioral health service professionals, other elected officials, you name it. I mean, right, I think there's uh some firm beliefs in regards to um this as a tool. Um, no doubt what, what is clear across anybody's opinion of it. This is only a tool, right? It, this, this isn't, this is by no means a silver bullet. This is not going to resolve homelessness. This is for a small uh fraction of the community. But again, it happens to be uh, a fraction of the community that is truly themselves out there suffering, that has not seen success in the other services that we have. Um, and uh, just wanted to, to, to respond to a couple of the things um as Councilman Adena was asking. Number one, the, the two reports that we were utilizing, uh, we cited them. If you wanted to take a look there in, in the memo with links, uh, both of them from uh 2019. One of them started in 2018 uh that looked at the data. And it was specifically actually only looking at uh the population that went into assisted outpatient treatment. So it was looking at, you know, sort of what was their impact uh when they were out of assisting outpatient treatment? And then af- after they were entered into assisted outpatient treatment. Um, so not to say that it's, you know, impossible, that there were other factors. Clearly, that, you know, a lot of cities like San Francisco are trying all kinds of things. This is just one tool, but, but the studies did look at that specifically. Um, and, and if, and if you want to know that this is not the silver bullet, we don't, we don't have to look far, right? The fact that San Francisco may see some success in assisted outpatient treatment, it has not solved homelessness in San Francisco. Uh, so it's not going to solve it here either. Um, and, but uh, both of those, those studies um are, are cited there and, and you can take a look. The other thing um i- is you mentioned was that this is outpatient treatment. I think the, the, the nuance that I'll highlight there for you is the assisted part of this in the title. Uh, assisted outpatient treatment is the difference. Everything that we have right now in the county is outpatient treatment, all of it. The only, you know, sort of permanent is what we have is permanent supportive housing, which it's supportive, so it has some support services, um, and it's obviously permanent housing. But even in permanent supportive housing, as I stated, it, it does not show a hundred percent success rate. Some of the best are around ninety-five percent, but that still means you have around five percent, a small percentage of individuals for, for one reason or another. And mental health is high up there on that list. Uh, I know this because I, I'm dealing with it, right? With the incidents that are happening in Second Street Studios or Villas in the Park. Um, and the, the biggest complaints, not only coming from the residents in and around those developments, but actually from the residents inside the developments. So that the other formerly homeless individuals that now reside in those permanent supportive housing developments that uh also complain and are struggling with some of their neighbors uh because those neighbors are really, really struggling with severe mental illness. And um, and permanent supportive housing is not exactly, right? That, that, that location, it, it, it does a hell of a job and it shows really good success rates. Um, but it, it literally can't help everybody, can't help a hundred percent, and that's per the data. And um, and, and what we do see, and as you know, the Vice Mayor points out and as others, and I've got numerous examples, right? There are some people in our community that we don't have a tool for right now. This tool may not help them, but from the statistics that we've seen, uh, it's the only tool that it's targeted to that population. And it's the only tool that we're not utilizing at the moment for this, this uh population. Uh, and so in my mind, I, I, I don't like to stick with the default because the default's not working. Um, I'm open, clearly open to other, you know, solutions and, and not saying this is the only one we should be focused on. Um, you know, hence why I've supported numerous supportive housing projects and other developments and, and more than happy, as Paul knows, to work with him or others in our community. And I, I have an upcoming meeting with the new Director of Behavioral Health Services to work with her. Even right as we butt heads, uh, my goal is to work with the other professionals to be able to help our community members. I happen to have a, a personal opinion in regards to this tool. And um, and the fact that we have not utilized it and that it has shown success across the state. Um, I, I don't see that there's a good argument that we shouldn't be implementing this tool a- and, and seeing how it can help these particular population of our community members. And so um, and I, I, I want to thank our um, our intergovernmental relations team. Thank you, Alexandra, for being here. And uh, I, I was not aware of the timeline that the county had on, on hearing this. So uh, and that's, you know, so it is rather timely. That was not necessarily the uh, what we had in mind, but I'm, I'm glad that we did do this then at this time. And, and hopefully this can prepare us to better advocate as we work with our county, um, you know, over the next several months. Um, and so thank you for, for that.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Davis. I see your hand is still up. It's, do you want to try it back in?
Yes, I just, I got a message from one of the um members of the public who tried to put their hand up and it didn't, it didn't go up. And so the person with the phone number ending in six nine one zero would like to comment on this item.
Okay. We could uh-
Little roundabout way to hey, raise hand, but here we are.
Okay.
And Tony, can you remind our, our public how to raise their hand on that? Because that made, I know that's also confusing when you're on the phone. It may not have worked, but just a, just a reminder for anybody who's on the phone right now. Because I see we have another caller.
Um, I don't have it open, I think it's star nine, but I did click allow to talk on six nine one ten or six nine ten.
Six nine ten? Uh, person ending in six nine, six nine ten, go ahead.
I did have, I did star nine uh when this topic first came up, so I don't know what happened.
Um, I did want to say uh a couple of things. And the first one was that if you talk to people at Second Street Studios, what they say to you is the reason that there's a failure in mental health at Second Street Studios is because the support services are not there. And that is why so many people have ended up getting evicted is because they're, they were, had mental health issues before they moved in, they had mental health issues when they lived there, and they still have mental health issues there because their mental health issues were not addressed. They did not have the proper support mental health issues for, for their mental health issues while they lived there. And so now those are probably going to be the same people that you guys are going to go head Laura's Law. And I think that that is really a shame. Because what's happening is you stick to the same small pool of providers. And you say, these are the same three people that we use for everything. And when those people fail, you say, oh, well, we used all the tools in our toolbox. And the people who suffer are the unhoused people. And we keep asking you to use more providers and you don't. And then you sit there and say, oh, well, we tried. And then it's the unhoused people that suffers as a result of this. And I'm asking you again to rethink how you do this because it's really the unhoused people that are going to suffer. Those are the people that you're going to try and lock up under Laura's Law. And I just don't think that you're thinking of this broadly. And you keep relying on what the providers say as to what kind of a job they did. And you're not doing any end user surveys. Ask the people what kind of a job the providers are doing and see, and maybe you'll get like a better answer. Because I can tell you at Second Street Studios, there's a failure to provide good services, good mental health services to the people there. And that's why there's a high, high turnover rate there. And that's why those poor people had the same problems there before as they do when they're getting evicted. And that is a problem, and that is an injustice to our unhoused community and the mental health community. And so when you're talking-
Thank you. Okay, well, um, Councilmember Prowl, uh, I see your hand is back up.
Yeah, sorry, I'll, I'll be brief. Um, and, and, you know, I think uh, that's actually the, one of the things that I think, you know, we should kind of be more, more broad uh in, in our conversations as far as what it is that we actually have with permanent supportive housing. And I think some have the belief that it is, uh, it is, it is going to be able to solve all of our issues with homelessness. But permanent supportive housing is not a mental hospital. And it's not meant uh or intended to completely house and, and successfully house uh individuals that are all suffering from mental health issues. It, it can help some of them, but it's not intended to help all of them. They, uh, because that's, that's not how it's built out. And, and indeed, we see some people failing there. Um, I, I would not disagree with the caller that we need to, we need to be able to look at all of these because Second Street Studios was the first one. And we need to learn what we're not doing well enough there to make it even more successful than it is today. Um, and we're doing that actually now in my office, convening uh with all the stakeholders there to try to see what we can do at Second Street Studios, uh, because we can't fail at these. And, and we've said this numerous times, I said this when we were approving Second Street Studios, uh, being the first one. If we fail at Second Street Studios, uh, then nobody around the county is going to want to build permanent supportive housing because they're going to say it doesn't work. And uh, whether you're in the unhoused community or you're in the housed community, you're going to say, hey, this doesn't work. So we can't fail. That doesn't mean that we're going to be perfect out the gate, but we need to learn from it. But at the same time, uh, just like Laura's Law is not the silver bullet, neither is permanent supportive housing. Uh, and we need to be able to, to incorporate all the different tools. Uh, and this is one of them again, that, that has been left on the table and it shouldn't be.
Great.
That's it, thanks.
Thank you. All right, we have a, a motion and a second, uh, Tony?
Arenas? Yes. Cohen?
Hi.
Davis?
Hi.
Prowl?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Thank you.
So the next item is addressing homelessness through the duration of the COVID-19 pandemic. Um, it's also Councilmember Prowl's this uh item. We'll go to public comments first, uh, Paul Soto.
Uh, thank you, uh, council. Um, we can really do some good work in, in both these areas because these, this is related to the memo that you had just given before. And I really, really thank the previous caller because she articulated very clearly these pieces that are missing from the overall conversation that we're not able to insert it. I really liked this particular memo, uh, Councilmember Prowl, because you, you are cognizant of the fact that you just don't go and bulldoze somebody's uh pad because they feel safe. You know, homeless people are very territorial and, and, and they, we feel safe in our areas. That's why I'll never leave the horseshoe. When I was homeless, I was along the Guadalupe, right there where the horseshoe is at. You know, so I'm very connected with this community. They're connected with me, they trust me, you know? And, and I've given them reasons to trust me. You know, I, I'm, I have relationships already built in to these services, to different service providers and people that are coming new into the field that the county has already trusted to establish these uh programs. You know, so, but specifically, so that's why I'd, I'd really like to start working with you on this so that I could provide, so I can be a conduit and connect all these services. I'm also in the process of getting connected with Stanford University and using them as a resource. They're in Santa Clara County. We must start using and expanding our ability to access the resources, consolidate each other's strengths towards a, towards a common goal. With respect to this memo though, um, I really like the fact that you're um using the uh sanctioned encampments, which, which we've been talking about for the past couple of years. But this one, now you're bringing it into fruition because to just wipe out somebody's household and not be sensitive to the fact that this person has to relocate, but at least having some means by where they can go and receive some kind of services for, um, for the lack thereof. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, Blair?
All right, thank you. Uh, thank you for this item. Uh, thank you for, for both of these items. And uh, the words of Sean Cartwright, Cartwright able to uh, being allowed to speak, she really offered and contributed a lot, uh, so thanks for that. Um, yeah, for, for this item, uh, you know, Robert Aguirre was coming in uh to city council meetings uh, the end of December and I guess early January. And, you know, really making the point that I hope uh, the, the memo that you offered today, I will look at it uh soon. But you will be uh wanting to work on the idea of a uh, how people from the homeless community can, can form a, a council and, and be a, a commission or a committee, a, a part of the commission process in San Jose of some, in some way. And, you know, just for their voice to be more heard and a more regular part of, of community life, I, I think is important to have that voice. Uh, the idea, you know, the spotlight, we ran an article uh that featured a councilperson Prowl a, a week or two ago, you know, that uh, you know, uh, neighbors are, are upset and tired of, of the homeless. They're just, you know, there always has to be new commitments to communication and dialogue and, and just for people to feel safe, you know, and, and to make those steps so things can be safe. And uh, that, that always takes uh energy and effort. And uh, people like uh, the mayor's aide, Paul Perrara, he's always working, always working towards that kind of stuff. And uh, I can, consider his efforts, what he's trying to create for the community at this time. And, and he's really trying to create important uh things. And it's, it's just the effort of good communication and dialogue. And I, I think uh, having people, if I have enough time left here.
No, actually, Blair, you're out of time.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, uh, Brian?
Hello, um, my name is Brian. Uh, I would kind of like to echo the words from the previous speaker. I think having kind of a council or committee of unhoused people would be a good idea. I do have some concerns, I think, on the second bullet point on this recommendation about continuing abatements past the COVID-19 um crisis. I do, especially with a lack of housing opportunities. I think we're just going to see a lot of the same issues that we had uh prior to COVID. Where we're just going to keep people in a continual cycle of pushing them out of places and then continuing to have to do that. I think we do need to look for larger scale housing uh developments that, to fix that. Thank you.
Thank you, um, person with the number ending in six nine one zero.
Yeah, um, I'm not going to be able to support anything of, that involves sweeps. Um, I just can't. I think that right now we've essentially got, um, we've backed into sanctioned encampments already. So, and I think that right now, everyone knows where to find folks in camps, whether it's outreach workers, advocates, um, police, um, healthcare workers. Everyone knows where everyone is in the camps, and I think that that's great. Um, it's made people much more stable. We can send out, hey, we just found like, you know, a mom and three kids. And the city, the county knows where to find people, and that's much more stable for everybody. The camps are growing, um, it's, they've been exploding ever since COVID started, week by week. So starting sweeps is not going to help anything. And you're sweeping them to where? To what, like magical, like new navigation center or new housing or new shelter? You're sweeping them just to somewhere else, and that's nowhere. Um, so I couldn't agree with that. And if you're, I, great idea, everyone, but also vaccinate us. We're going into the camps all the time. We are constantly getting told that we got exposed here and exposed there. So vaccinate the advocates that are going in there all the time and the outreach workers. We are frontline workers. Um, but the sweep should not start. Just beef up the beautify. The, the uh, Housing Department had a great four-step process. I think there's nothing wrong with that process, but restarting sweeps is nothing but like cruelty. And you don't have any plan of sweeping them anywhere other than somewhere else. And somewhere else is nowhere.
All right, thank you, uh, Scott?
Good afternoon again, Vice Mayor Jones, members of the committee, Scott Neese, San Jose Downtown Association. This item is certainly connected to the previous one, just that tough balancing act between health and safety concerns and compassion for those who are suffering in our community. Councilman Prowl gets almost all of the uh emails that I get complaining about the messes, but he's got uh much larger territory- but he's got uh much larger territory than just downtown throughout the district. And these are unsanctioned encampments now that haven't been touched since March. And we have a number, uh, we had a fire last week across from Children's Discovery Museum. We have warming fires. Some very dangerous conditions with with the trash and and vermin. And we, we need to clean up some of these public areas. I I believe there's nobody uh that's more in tune with this balancing act than Councilman Peralas. He's suggesting that we move these into sanctioned encampments, finding the places for that. Uh, we don't want to just do whack-a-mole and and cycle and move folks from one encampment to another. We do need long-term solutions, but in the meantime, there are other victims besides the unhoused here that we have to take into consideration. And we get the emails sometimes, you know, fifteen times a day from from the folks that are very concerned about their health and safety. So we need to balance all of this extremely difficult. We're there with you. We want to be part of the solution.
Thank you, Scott. Gail?
Hi, good afternoon. Um, establishing sanctioned encampments is the only way to keep our unhoused folks safe. I've been advocating for sanctioned encampments for many, many years. Um, one thing, when the abatements are happening, believe me, um, there is, and there is no way that um it has ever been a careful approach. The unhoused folks are already in crisis, living outdoors with nothing. And then when they see all these people coming in and taking things from them and moving them around, they're still in crisis and it's worse. Um, outreach services are not offering much, maybe one or two bags. Um, the people that go out there only offer a homeless shelter, only a shelter. No unhoused person wants to go into a shelter because of how it is run. Staff steals from them, and right now there is a virus. They're scared to death. They are safer outdoors. There hasn't been a large outbreak. So I go to encampments every single day, and there hasn't been, thank God, a large outbreak of the virus. They feel safe living with their other unhoused friends, they call family, outdoors. Um, and that we should be keeping. I went to an abatement today and I'm not happy about it. They abated today. The city has already abated one large encampment on Roberts. That's against the CDC guidelines. I do appreciate um Raul suggesting vaccinating the unhoused. I think it's great. Um, but you can't do that if you're abating. They need to be in the same place and not be pushed around like they were today after the abatement. So um, thank you for at least having that that good suggestion, Councilperson Peralas about vaccination. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Uh, bringing it back to the committee, uh, Councilmember Peralas.
Yeah, thank you. And um, as you can tell, obviously, I've been trying to work on uh how we might uh be able to address some of these major challenges that we've seen rise up during uh the pandemic that uh really is just exasperated uh challenges that we know that we've had for for years. And um, and in fact, I've been saying this to to staff for months. Um, and what Sean Cartwright mentioned, that we we have been backed into uh quote-unquote sanctioned encampments. They're still unsanctioned at the moment, but we've essentially been backed into it. Um, and uh because of that, um, there are several of them that are located in locations that are not ideal. Uh, and in fact, uh, some of them uh located in places that we as the city wouldn't even have the legal authority to make them sanctioned encampments, uh specifically like the Guadalupe Park and Gardens that we know the FAA has come in even previously because that's where we had Hope Village and uh and per FAA and and uh was actually the state that came in on that one and cleared out that on some state property. Um, and we've already heard from FAA and our airport that that uh there's, there's, right, there's almost um just a a waiting for that that uh time bomb to hit uh of of people uh, you know, beginning to get back to to a normal sense of life uh because of the vaccine. And uh, and ultimately, some of these locations uh are going to be abated regardless of of what our position may be on wanting to make them sanctioned or not uh because of where they're located. And so for me, seeing that this was coming, uh, I wanted to lay out uh some strategies. Number one, the the, I think the most important part, uh, and as I uh mentioned there in regards to vaccinations, um, granted, we we don't make that call here at the city. We've had plenty of debates about that. Um, and we'll talk about that as we just approved on our agenda uh for a discussion in two weeks about the county and the the distribution of vaccinations. But I wanted to make that clear uh because I agree that right now what we have is we have individuals that are unhoused, very vulnerable in our communities, uh, and they are, for the most part, when they're in these encampments are uh, you know, where they're easy to be, to be located um as as uh has been pointed out. And what that means is that if we want to get vaccinations out to this community, well, we have to take advantage of that. The fact that that um for the most part, abatements are not going on right now. Indeed, as Gail points out, there are some. The city does have uh authority and and as the county has pointed out, uh, and even the CDC guidelines, uh, there are limited uh reasons where you can come in and and make a a higher priority health decision to clear out an encampment. We have not utilized that uh very often at all. There's a couple uh times where we have uh in the city, uh, but for the most part, you look around, um, especially my district, um, right? We we have not been utilizing that uh as a tool and instead have have been uh preventing any abatements. But we want to be able to get these individuals vaccinated before any sort of uh sense of 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 normalcy comes back in the community and and we get uh the pre-pandemic uh encampment management or abatements happening. And so that's why I made that as a a number one priority there. And uh, indeed, we have to advocate that to the county. So hopefully, some of the callers that called in can can support that effort as well, that we get them prioritized. I'm not against uh also including um the the outreach teams that go out there to support them because I would agree that that, and and in fact, I think a number of them um already qualify as um as uh emergency workers uh and so should be able to to get that um today. And I know our nonprofit groups that are out there, um, advocates may not uh fall in because they're not necessarily working with an, with any of the nonprofit organizations. Uh, but I wouldn't be against a- adding that into the advocacy. Um, and and I'll do that in the in the motion. Um, for number two, this is happening again regardless. Um, I know that abatements don't solve homelessness. Um, and I've, I've never pretended to to say that they do. But at the same time, the lack of actually managing the unsanctioned encampments out there, what it does do is it brings with it a whole host of new challenges and issues, not just for our housed community or the businesses that are in the area, but for our unhoused community themselves. We've had homicides uh now. Uh, the first homicide of the year happened in the uh, one of the encampments uh right off of the Guadalupe in my district. Uh, we had a homicide last year. It happened in the Guadalupe Park and Gardens. Uh, when we're not managing these areas, and we've seen that historically, even in sanctioned encampments. And I know that that's where our housing team uh has pushed back on me over the years. Um, and even the mayor has pushed back on me over the years on this idea of sanctioned encampments. This is, I don't know, fifth time or something I've I've brought it forward. Um, because of the cities that uh have implemented sanctioned encampments and then see them, you know, uh, have to be uh terminated due to failure and and crime and you name it. And uh, I still firmly believe that we can run a successful sanctioned encampment. And quite frankly, I think we have some examples of that that have been forced upon us through this last year because we have seen that if we provide a basic level of services in some of these encampments, um, that we can maintain them and manage them. And uh, and that's not to be said again for for all of the locations, but I do think that we can uh, we can do this successfully uh in in certain locations. Um, and so, uh, and I know it's been successful, um, because we've we've seen that. Uh, you know, and we've had a number of of concerns in some of these other locations, whether it's Guadalupe Park and Gardens that the FAA wouldn't allow the sites to to exist anyways. We've had some locations where we've had uh multiple fires uh that are, that are places that are right next to residential homes. In fact, one home uh that caught on fire uh in my district, um, in locations that are along our creeks and waterways that also um we would be a forced regardless uh by the state uh to to clear an encampment. Uh, but there are locations where we can actually have some sanctioned encampments, and and I'm more than happy to have uh if we're only doing one, uh, which I don't think that's enough, but if we are, I'm more than happy to have that be in District Three. I've said that time and again. Um, and, you know, I think uh I certainly, and as was pointed out, I think maybe Blair pointed out, the the recent media that that uh came forward. Um, uh, you know, I hear it from both sides of this issue, quite frankly. Um, I was living in the Market Almond neighborhood when we transitioned the South Hall Blue Tent into Shelter. And uh, you know, I had some of my own neighbors chastising me for supporting it. Uh, and at the same time, I would regularly take my son on walks around the block uh in his stroller. And and I, it was not uncommon to get harassed by some of those same residents that were living in the tent, uh, that were maybe outside hanging out, drinking, um, and likely suffering from other challenges and issues, drug use, mental illness, whatever. Uh, and we'd get harassed. And um, and and I still uh was in support of of those uh, uh, specifically that uh South Hall Tent. Um, and even just as recently as Monday, grabbing dinner uh at the sofa market with my wife and my son. Um, just stepping out of the car, happen to have an individual that just so happened to be a resident of the South Hall Tent as well, threatened to kick uh my ass and my son's ass, and excuse my French, but that was the words that he used. And and this is my two-year-old kid. Um, I, I, you know, I get plenty of community members that uh will will chastise me for for support of of these solutions. Um, and even some within the unhoused community, right, that that uh or or advocates uh as well. I hear it from all sides, and I think uh Scott Neese pointed it out well. I I try to find a a delicate balance. Uh, and it's not always easy, uh, but I still support these solutions, whether it's the temporary shelter, whether it's sanctioned encampments. Um, I know these individuals need help, and if I was there, that's what I would want. I'd want somebody to help me. Um, and and I think that that's what we have an opportunity to do. Um, you know, the 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 recent article that that came out um had uh individuals um wanting to vilify our our unhoused community members. And in the statement even that came into my office in an email that was highlighted there was calling them parasites uh in 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 interest in just writing off or or eliminating the parasites uh within our unhoused community. Um, and I I I had to respond to that. I want to thank uh the CEO of Destination of Jennifer Loving uh as as we worked together to quickly respond to that. Um, that is not the way uh we should be uh treating or associating anybody in our unhoused community. I understand there are challenges that our community is feeling, our business communities are feeling. Um, but uh, these are fellow human beings of ours, um, and certainly uh constituents of mine when they're living here in the downtown, and uh it's it's to my advantage and everybody's, quite frankly, uh, that we look for solutions. Um, and and this is one of those solutions, uh, just like the last item we were talking about, a tool in the toolbox that we have not yet implemented, and and this is at the city's jurisdiction, which is a sanctioned encampment. Uh, so now being a year into COVID, uh, we're about to be uh mass rollout of distribution of the vaccines. I think this gives us an opportunity to be able to look at this again, uh, both the sanctioned encampments uh as we begin to revamp up our, reramp up uh our abatement man, or our our encampment management and abatements. Um, and um, and just want to uh ask, I know staff didn't have a um, a response on this one, at least not written. So I wanted to see if uh the city manager's office has a, any response in regards to the the directions proposed in the memo.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Peralas. Appreciate that. Um, you know, city manager released an informational memo last week around the uh encampment abatement um program, um, and specifically kind of what what we've done as a city from August to, I think, you know, of a few weeks ago. And in that memorandum, we kind of teed up that we would be bringing, you know, a policy conversation to the council to better weigh in on this, given some of the the impacts that have been discussed today. So um, we didn't do a forum because I think the administration would recommend um that this memorandum roll up into that conversation. So the report back that I think Councilmember Peralas is seeking, that would be part of the policy conversation that we would be teeing up. And we're trying to target the middle of March for that conversation, especially with recommendation one, to see how the vaccine program is rolled out through the county, so we have additional information.
Okay, and actually, in in regards to, I'm I'm fine with rolling that up, and I did see that that uh memo from the city manager's office. But in regards to number one, wouldn't it make sense to try to provide that advocacy sooner than than that March conversation? Wouldn't it just make sense to provide that advocacy as soon as possible?
Um, yes, possibly. I mean, in in some ways, you know, the legislative guiding principles that the full council ad- adopted gives us flexibility to advocate here. Um, I would say as as we've discussed over the last forty-eight hours, we have a lot of requests and advocacy points with the county around the vaccination program. So we're happy to roll this into part of that conversation. But again, that is a fairly exhaustive list, so I didn't want to promise on an outcome or a report back in any uh in any specificity, Councilmember.
Okay, and um, are we, do we think we'll be having this conversation in two weeks as we have on the agenda on on maybe some advocacy topics? And would that be a good place to loop this in? Or are you thinking a different time, as you're stating, in March to to try and have that conversation?
I certainly think if we have additional details around the county's plan to vaccinate um our unhoused and our our unhoused residents, um, for February twenty-third, if we have that information, we can absolutely report back as part of that conversation for number one. I think the kind of global memo or or number two and three really probably belongs in that conversation later on in March. Um, I do know that the county um had established at one point a working group to think through this, the vaccination program for our unhoused community and the logistics around it. And a lot of conversation about the Johnson and Johnson vaccine, giving it a a single dose might be the most effective uh given the appointments. But other than that, I have not heard anything back from the county. So we can, we can push and try and get more information for two weeks as part of the the vaccination update.
Okay, and I, I look, I don't disagree that uh recommendation two and three would make most sense to loop in in March. I I do think, though, that this conversation on uh the advocacy, uh, you know, I don't think anybody can argue that our unhoused community is not a vulnerable community. And quite frankly, knowing that they could be abated, um, and that's why I'm making this, you know, clear that I think that we need to a- advocate for this to have, you know, this to happen first before we go out and um, and really resume any sort of uh pre-pandemic uh encampment management or abatement. Because at that point, then we we lose them, um, right, in 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 an easy opportunity that we have to be able to 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 connect with them. And so, and I don't disagree with the potential of the Johnson Johnson vaccine because it is a a one, you know, one shot. Um, so makes it even easier, but that's that's not yet available. And so, um, I would be interested in in, I guess, so right now, if we can uh have this conversation on recommendation number one, um, a little bit more in detail in two weeks. And because I'd like to advocate sooner than waiting for, you know, March on this. Um, and I'm I'm happy to take feedback from my colleagues here on rules and their thoughts about about that. I'll make a motion so that they can, they can chew on it exactly what I'm suggesting. Uh, but I I would note, especially because I've obviously been advocating for certain distributions and and equitable distributions of the vaccine, we know that within our unhoused communities, uh, we have a disproportionate number of those individuals that are that are uh of uh Latino descent or or uh Latino uh, uh, black, uh, that, you know, um, that tend to be represented disproportionately within there as well. And uh, and just indeed, just much more vulnerable population. Um, so I, I would put them up there as a someone we should be advocating for, uh, but I'm happy to hear from my colleagues. And so the motion I'll give would be that we um approve uh my memorandum with recommendation two and three being looped into the city manager's um encampment uh report that they're going to, that he's going to provide in March. And that uh recommendation number one um come forward in two weeks uh as we talk about the county's vaccination, so that that will, we can maybe make a decision sooner on on sending some advocacy, specific advocacy. Thanks.
Happy to second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Um, Councilmember Cohen?
Yeah, I just want to thank you, uh, Councilmember Peralas, for your advocacy on this issue. I mean, you you have, you've provided a good balance of what we need in solving this problem, the the caring for the the community, uh, the unhoused community and advocacy for solutions to the problem. Um, you know, it's a tough balance, but one that's important. And um, as you said, you know, you hear from both sides on this issue, and and I hear it too. It's, you know, the message of one, which is, you know, It's, you know, the message of one, which is, you know, that that completely uncaring, sweep everybody away and, you know, just dispose of them as if they're garbage, right? And then the other side of, you know, don't, you know, leave them be, they're 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 human too. And that's obviously what we have to balance. And, you know, I think you and I are on the side, you know, we have to treat treat them with respect and 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 make sure that we take take care of our our homeless neighbors. But we also need to find solutions that are going to take care of our our communities. And as you said, you know, we're dealing in our district with fires and and things are, put our neighborhoods at risk. I've I've come to conclude that the the only solution that that really, in order to coexist with the unsanctioned camps, we really are have to turn them into somewhat sanctioned camps anyway, right? We have to provide them with services on site. We have to provide them with facilities that turn them into somewhat of a sanctioned camp in in certain locations. So I I'm with you, and I'm in pushing for for creating sanctioned locations. And that may mean taking places that are already unsanctioned camps and in some sense sanctioning them so that they have facilities and resources right there on site, or finding other locations where we can sanction them. And while you said, you know, District Three is a good place to put someone, I think that, you know, I think we can probably find locations in every district because we already have, I think all of our districts have this problem. I I don't speak for all the districts, but I know District Four, we have locations with large numbers of people where we can find places to put sanctioned camps, and I think we're going to have to do that. So I think it's important for us to find these locations, for us to, you know, work on managing locations that are going, that are less safe and where we're going to have to do some abatements. And I think it makes sense for us to find ways to to vaccinate those communities, make sure people are safe. You know, we have to, if there's a large management issue, as has been brought up with the dual vaccine, and how do we make sure we, when we provide the first act, first dose, that we can continue to track people and find a second dose. So that that comment about waiting for single-dose vaccine is important, I think. Make sure that you can do this in a way that's going to be, you know, effective. But, you know, I think this is, this is an important conversation to have sooner rather than later. I think that all three of these items is important to have sooner rather than later. Because as we're hearing, there was a a a loss of patience in some sense in our community about about all of these problems. And and so I don't know that we want to delay too long on trying to find some of these solutions. I think we've been talking about this for a long time, and and all of these things require some some action. But thank you for for bringing this conversation forward so we can talk about it.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Cohen. Don't see any other hands raised, so we have a motion in a second. Tony?
Arenas?
Yes.
Cohen?
Hi.
Davis?
Hi.
Peralos?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is G five, removal of the Thomas Fallon statue. And we'll go to the public first. And I don't spell. I saw Paul's hand raised, there you go. Go ahead, Paul.
Hi, Paul Soto. I wanted to thank you, first of all, Councilmember Peralos, for your attendance at that meeting. I I saw you there, and I was checking, I was looking at the hands. I didn't see your hand raised, and then I saw your hand raised and saw you weigh in on it. And and I needed to hear not only what you said, but how you said it, because it it speaks to your understanding of the issue. It's not about Thomas Fallon, it's not about the statue, his minor role. I read Locardo's memo, which is why it compelled the question yesterday that I couldn't believe that he wrote it. A tenth-grade history teacher would have not let him get away with that paper. I mean, it was that poorly written, because there's three elements to the truth. There's the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. And somebody thinks because they tell the truth, they've told the whole truth and nothing but the truth, because they told a truth. And and so, so, you know, th- this is why it needs to be removed. And like I said, I'd really like to work with your office. I'm already going to be at every single Arts Commission meeting throughout this entire process. You know, to to, number one, mitigate the cost of its removal, that's number one. Advocate for its placement at the at the History Museum so that the statue could be properly contextualized. And thirdly, to give the people, the citizen here in our city, something to rally around. You know, I'm already in contact with a lot of the elders that tried to have the statue removed in times past. So I'm in contact with the elders, we're forming a committee, we're going to, not a celebration, but a a a a a a coming together of reverence for the peoples whose lives were lost as a result of the decimation and the cruelties that stand shortly thereafter from eighteen fifty to eighteen fifty-nine. So thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Bringing it back, I I see Rhonda's hand is raised. I want to go ahead and and speak.
All right, thank you. So just Rhonda Hadnot, on behalf of Mayor Locardo's office, just wanted to briefly share that the mayor is just looking for this item to go directly to the Arts Commission. And so, so that's it.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Peralos?
Yeah, thank you. And, you know, I think we helped the mayor free up a lot of his time that he didn't have before on Wednesdays. And it's proven by Rhonda being here right now and not the mayor. But thank you, Rhonda, for 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 being here. And and see, I knew the mayor should have just appointed me to rules sooner. He can go out and get some other things done. And, look, I'm I'm going to be supporting this and moving this forward. And as as Paul points out, I was at the the public hearing and and able to hear overwhelmingly, right, the the response from our community. I happen to have looked into this issue myself pretty extensively as it's risen to a to a high concern. Understood what happened when it was first, you know, commissioned to, when it was put in storage, to the the challenge, actually, and when it, when it was ultimately erected again in the current location that it is today. Media documentation on it and and different organizations that that chimed in and community members and and now are rehashing sort of 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 that. And I think overwhelmingly, the the response has sort of remained consistent from what I've seen over the years. And and I think, you know, the mayor words it in his memo at the conclusion of the public process, barring some startling dramatic change in the facts, he'll support the removal of the statue. He says it's time to move on. Although I I I agree with that, I I think it's more than just sort of it's time to move on. And I think Paul made some, you know, alluded to some of that in regards to really a discussion should we had around what is it that we honor and recognize at the level of a statue or a monument, right? A mural in our city, right? And how does something get to that level? What is it that that, you know, sort of we're telling with a statement like that? It's one thing for things to be in the history books, right? Or and I've actually, I've read a couple of the books, Former McHenry and the journal that he found on on Tom Fallon. And, you know, so it's one thing to to sort of have the history that's there. But it's another thing to then honor and recognize parts of our history with something as significant as a statue or a monument and a mural. And so I think that that's really where the conversation for me should be directed and and where we should be be focusing and not just simply say, hey, you know, we've had enough. It's time to move on with the Tom Thomas Fallon statue. Let's go through the process, let's, you know, commence the process of removing it. And and then move on and say, hey, that's it, it's time to move on. Because I don't think so at all. I think actually, it's it's time to to have a much deeper conversation is is what I will say. And so I do support the mayor's direction and and that memo. But I I think I just, I would, I would have maybe come at it just a little differently. But I know he put a lot of work into it in regards to coming to that decision. No, it wasn't easy. And so I will move the mayor's memorandum that we commenced the city process to remove the Tom Fallon statue.
Okay.
Okay, and that's with the understanding that it'll be directed to the Arts Commission?
Yes, I believe actually it's quite a lengthy process that staff laid out. I believe Carrie Adams Happner is here, and she laid out in in the early consideration form. I won't list it off unless somebody wants me to, but or maybe Carrie can talk about it, but yes.
Great. Carrie, I see you have your hand raised. Would you like to chime in?
Yeah, just briefly, I just want to say the staff has done the analysis, and we agree that we can greenlight this right now. There is a council approved deaccession policy on relocating or removing works of public art, which we've outlined in this prioritization form. So in accordance with our council policy, what we will do is we can add this item to the Arts Commission work plan. And then we can bring it to the CEDC, the Community Economic Development Committee, for its approval. So that would be our process, and then we can go straight into the accession policy and that body of work with the Arts Commission.
Great, thank you, Carrie. Councilmember Arenas?
So sorry about that. I want to thank the callers for, and specifically Paul Soto, who I know is is leading his efforts within his community to bring together elders who have, you know, as we go back in time, those folks are connected a lot closer to some of the grievances and injustices that happened in the past that allow us to learn from experiences. And I'm glad that that he's doing that. I look forward to to seeing what those elders come up with and and an opportunity to express what that statue represents for them, as we know, and and is reflected in in the in the memo that, you know, history is told by those who are in in a position of privilege or who have the appearance of white privilege. And I think it's it's about time that San Jose has this conversation and that we include all of our community in it. I look forward to what the Art Commission is going to decide on this, but I don't and I and I and I trust Carrie that you will have a very inclusive process, that you'll make sure that our community knows about this, that it provides them an opportunity to really, one, express their position and two, to shape some of what is going to happen. I know that you outlined, I don't know how to say that, deaccession?
Deaccession, yes.
Deaccession, that's the first time I have seen that one. And but I I think I understand what it means and I look forward to that process of deaccession. And 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 one of the things that caught my ear was Paul Soto saying that we needed to make sure that, one, the property is properly contextualized in our history of San Jose. And second, I believe he wants to be very sensitive to the costs that involve this. I think I don't want this for the taxpayers to take a huge burden when many other cities were able to just get rid of it in a very organic and natural process when folks were out in the streets. And so this time, it seems like that's not going to happen, unfortunately. But but and so I hope that there's some some parameters there for costs and that, you know, you'll be fiscally responsible in that process.
Councilmember, thank you very much. I just want to assure you and the rest of the council members that, you know, we'll take great care in this public process, and we're going to treat the deaccession process like we would treat the accession process. You know, making sure that there's a very transparent process by which people are informed and that all perspectives are honored and respected. And we will include any of the feedback from the forum for the Public Art Committee and the Commission to consider. And then ultimately, this will come to the full council for its final approval and decision.
I I appreciate that. I'm sure that you will have a group of volunteers who would be willing to remove that statue on their own if you looked for them. But I will trust in the process and look forward to hearing and seeing this come back to us.
Yeah, and I just want to say, you know, this, the statue is very well-built. It has a very deep foundation, and so it's not something that can be moved with a truck. So this is something that's going to involve a a public works project. It is going to require, should that be the outcome, you know, it's going to require a a body of work that we're going to have to do it correctly just to ensure that we are treating the public realm and this this traffic median in the way that it needs to for, you know, public safety purposes.
Thank you. And and just as a side note, I'm happy to see you here, Councilmember Peralos. Roll at rules. I'm going to start a hashtag.
There you go. And we also got a new word for Words With Friends, so we learned a new word today. Okay, so we have a motion in a second, so Tony?
Arenas?
Yes.
Cohen?
Hi.
Davis?
Hi.
Peralos?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Okay. Next is we are on to open forum. So we have two speakers. Give me a second here. First speaker is Paul. Go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, Paul Soto, I have to say that I've really enjoyed participating in this entire conversation. I mean, they're just the whole Disrules Committee. I mean, I enjoy, like, all the committees, and I stayed for the entire duration. But this particular one is just very, very personal to me because I I've done a lot of work. And but I've just done a lot of work for my my community. And I they've just suffered a lot. And 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 I feel like I'm a like, I can, I can hear my mother and my fiance or everybody just tell them, you, you tell them, you, you they they used, they used to meet my mother in elementary school for speaking Spanish. And they taught my mother the Spanish, and I don't speak Spanish today because she she believed that if she taught us to speak Spanish, we would be treated the way that she was at school. And that's what disconnected me from my language, from Spanish. That's why I don't speak it. And and so this is, this is just critically important to me, and that's why I wanted to involve the 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 elders and to give them their respect and to give our community, our community, some semblance of power, some semblance of cathartic way of saying that by civic participation that we together can do what one person cannot do alone. You know, so I just can't thank all of you enough for 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 this work. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Blair?
Thanks for the words of Paul Soto. It's it's can be lonely work, and it can be satisfying work. So thank you for your efforts to address the statue issue, among other things. To talk about a few items from last night, again, to try to offer my own lonely work, to try to state a little more clearly that, you know, it's my hope out of any, out of anything from last, from from the impeachment process that's going on is that we're 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 all understanding there, there is a concept of a accountability that we really have to address in the actions of the president, of the former president. And if nothing else, just the fact that we're, we all have, we all try to consider that idea of accountability and what that can mean at this time, that is in itself is a lot. And I hope we can just accomplish that goal, and that can set up how to ask deeper questions about the impeachment process and if he should ever be invited back to the political arena again. And uh, I hope that's what we're addressing. Um, with fifty seconds left, uh, I also mentioned last night the ideas of uh green sustainability and equity and um, and reimagine and uh really good stuff. Uh, I, I forgot to include the ideas of open public policy and, and renewable energy. And those are really good ideals that I just really hope we can continue. Uh, it may be a difficult next five to ten years in the Bay Area. I, I just hope we don't give up on those ideals and, and we, we find ways to really want to practice them. And um, I guess with uh ten seconds, uh, thank, thanks for this meeting today. It was difficult in some places. Um, yeah, thanks for, uh, yeah, I have more to say, I guess, tomorrow with, at NSC. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Blair. That's all the public speakers, so being is adjourned.